I'd like to call to order this regular school board meeting of ISD 279. Start on my left with introductions. Go ahead.
Stephanie Fortner, school board member.
Jim Brigette, school board member.
Mike Ostafi, school board chair.
Heather Douglas, school board member.
Jessica Craig, school board member.
Kate McGuire, superintendent.
All right, thank you. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to see in the agenda, are there any additions to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor? Or second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Brigette, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. The agenda is accepted, five oh. First on the agenda this evening is a something that has been, you know, very crucial to moving the district forward. And I, we are going to approve our two new interim superintendents. And I wanted to introduce both of them before we make the motion. Dr. Rees-Graff, which for many people doesn't need an introduction because she's been around here for 24 years, retired two years ago, but has helped us out tremendously since then and has been pretty much in every role at the cabinet level during that period of time. Let's see, she, Dr. Rees-Graff retired from our assistant superintendent position in June of 16. She served a number of site and district level administrative positions. She was the site coordinator for the early childhood special education program and then went on to serve as a director of special education. She was promoted to the position of assistant superintendent of finance and operations and led the design and implementation of our long-range financial planning model. She provided outstanding leadership in the implementation of our new grade spans. More recently, Dr. Rees-Graff served as our interim chief technology officer in the fall of 2017 and assisted with the development of our updated digital learning for all plan. Board members obviously know her well. So I would like to, where is the motion? Where's the motion language? Or is it the same thing you have? Oh, okay, here it is. So I would like to make a motion to approve the interim superintendent contract by and between ISD 279 School Board and Dr. Kim Rees-Graff for June 1st through September 30th, 2018. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Craig. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Director Brigette.
I would just like to echo our chair's sentiments and welcome you back for at least three months and thank you very much for helping out in this transition period. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? With that, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Congratulations, Dr. Rees-Graff. Dr. Baugh, sitting next to Dr. Rees-Graff, is Dr. James Baugh and he served as the interim, he will serve as the interim superintendent from October 1st through 2018 if approved. Dr. Baugh retired in June 2017 from the superintendent position in Eastern Carver County. Dr. Baugh has 24 years of superintendent experience in Minnesota, having served as a superintendent in Owatonna, Lakeville, and Buffalo before moving to Eastern Carver. In total, Dr. Baugh has 39 years of experience in public, in public education in the state of Minnesota. So I would like to make a motion to approve the interim superintendent contract by and between ISD 279 School Board and Dr. Jim Baugh for October 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2018. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. Are there any comments? Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, likewise, I'd like to welcome Dr. Baugh and thank him so much for coming in and working so well with, with Dr. Rees-Graff. I know already they've had meetings, they've been in contact and worked, been working with Kate, and so I feel very confident that this tag team can help get us through this transition and help us find a fantastic full-time superintendent. So thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Same.
All right. With that, I will call the vote. All in favor of the motion to hire Dr. Baugh, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Dr. Baugh, welcome aboard. I believe that Director Douglas has to step aside for the rest of the meeting, so thank you for being here and coming in and supporting our new interim superintendents. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, with that, we are now moving on to our audience opportunity to address the school board. And I'm going to read this for everyone. The guidelines for audience opportunity to address the school board or regular business meetings. In the interest of community engagement, the Oseo School Board provides an opportunity for members of the audience to address the board as follows. Anyone who wishes to address the board must complete a speaker card and submit it to the school board chair prior to the start of the meeting. Once the audience opportunity to address the board has begun, no additional cards will be accepted. The board chair, or designee, will call on each speaker who has submitted a speaker card, first calling on those addressing an item included in the current agenda, followed by those addressing topics not on the current agenda. Speakers will be called in the following order: students, parents and guardians, district employees, district residents, and all others. When called upon, please state your name and topic. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole, not to any specific member or members, or to any person who is not a member of the board. If more than three individuals have organized to speak on the same topic, please designate a spokesperson who can summarize the issue. And please limit your comments to three minutes. Longer time may be granted at the discretion of the board chair. During this agenda item, normally not to exceed 20 minutes, the board and administration will listen to comments, ask clarifying questions if needed, and respond when appropriate. The board chair may delegate responsibility to the superintendent or the superintendents designee to follow up with the speaker within a few days following the meeting. Comments and interactions between board members and the public are expected to be respectful, courteous, professional, and civil. The board chair will be responsible for ensuring that interaction meets these standards and will disallow inappropriate interaction. In particular, speakers may not address criticism toward an individual employee. Such concerns should be directed privately to the employee supervisor or higher-level administrator. Personnel concerns should be directed to individuals in the following order: the building principal, the executive director for human resources, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and finally in writing to the school board. With those guidelines, I would like to call Shanaya Bryant.
Right there, please. Thank you. Hello, everybody. I guess maybe I just really actually have some, have a question in regards to the...
May I want to bring the microphone over?
In regards to your school district policies. There are some issues at a school. Children are being hurt at a school. Parents are being criminalized for speaking up about it, being trespassed from the school and being told they cannot enter in the school. At this point, nobody is addressing the issue with the teachers that are hurting the students. This issue has been brought up and spoken to with a number of individuals on your school board, school board members as well as the principal of the school. I do notice here that it states to, and as well as you stated, to send something in writing. Now, my question is, who, who do we send our concerns to, considering it has been addressed with everybody listed?
I, I don't know if you have spoken with Dr. Heil, if that's been done yet, but that would be the person to speak to.
Who is that the, who's that?
Dr. How is the assistant superintendent responsible for that school?
I've spoken to the principal of the school, I've spoken to the assistant principal, I've spoken to your general counsel, I've spoken to the superintendent liaison, I've spoken to Kim, and I've spoken to the superintendent as well. And the issue has not been resolved.
Now, I do...
So, just to respect your structure, who do I send something in writing to until this issue is resolved? Or do we just continue to come to school board meetings and have meetings at the school board in regards to the issues that these children are subjected to, as well as the parents that are being discriminated against for speaking out about the issues?
I, I do believe Dr. How is the one currently responsible for that. If you do have any other questions or concerns, you can send the letter in writing to the board. We have the email address and please send that...
Dr. How is responsible for what? I haven't, I haven't mentioned the school or anything like that. I haven't, we, this is our first time discussing, so are you already aware of the issue? I'm a little confused.
I, I have been made aware of an issue and I understand what area it's in and I understand that Dr. Heil is responsible for that area.
Okay, so who do I send the letter to so that I can make sure that this issue gets in the proper hands?
As I said, please direct it to the school board as a whole.
Okay. Will do.
That is the next step.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you at the next meeting, guys.
Okay, next up is Fatah and Team. Oh, I know Akwai, but Fatah and Team.
So there's a lot of us, but you already know that, so...
I know that.
So, hello, everybody. We know that it's two minutes per person, but we're a team, so bear with us. I will be the last one to speak. And my name is Fatah Akwai. I'm the programs director for African immigrant services, a community partner with the district. And I will let my team start off with why we're here.
Well, my name is Abdullah Kiatama. I am the executive director of the African immigrant services. We are here on a very short notice, but I think it's important to just say thank you to everybody. We've said that before, but we also, because Kate is retiring, I have to superintendent of the district, and this is one of our proudest moments to just say thank you to her. She's been amazing leader and inspiring leader. She's done wonderful, not only for the district leadership, for all of the children of the district, black, white, blue, yellow, green, all of them. And she has done an amazing job. And it's, it is a good thing to hold people accountable, but it's a good thing to recognize their sacrifices, their work, their hard work. And she, our community is so proud of her, of her leadership, of her work, of her commitment to uplifting all the children, to giving them world-class education, even under the most difficult and challenging environment. And so we just came to say thank you for, for, for helping all of us, for being a good partner and being for committed to the work on racial equity, from, from the racial equity policy, before that policy, creating consciousness in the districts around that every case, no case should be left behind, that all of them would disrupt the racially predictable outcomes for students, especially those students of color. And your quality of leadership, we know you are retiring, but your heart is, cannot retire, your commitment would never retire, and your legacy lives on in, in, in all of the work we do. We're just proud of your leadership, and that is why it is difficult to find your replacement. You know, you got a big shoes and it's difficult for anybody to be identified to fill that big shoes. And we just say, it, it was an important moment when I got the information that I could not find, and I told my team, I said, it would be difficult to replace her. It's difficult. There can only be one kind of Kate with that kind of quality in so many districts. So thank you, and you should be proud of your work in the district, you should be proud of your work in the state, and you should be proud of your work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Kate, we are very proud to be here this evening. I'd like to join, I'd like to extend our sincere thanks to you for the way you work with our community, which we could bring all of our cases here today for them to even speak on our behalf. The parents are very proud. We represent thousands of people across the, the district, and they are very proud of what you've done. You know, I was telling Fatah, I say, I have something, one philosopher say about good character. And when I read it, when I read this, it actually fit you. Just permit me to read this to her. It's written in Arabic. I will translate it for you. It say, "Al akhlaq," it's a good character. He yaruhu le tamoleti le tamut, bad al rahil. If you have a good character, it said that good character does not pass away even after your departure. So it means that the good character you demonstrate within the school district, it doesn't matter where you go, it's always going to live even after you. It says, "Fama ajmalet antasira beina naz, weyafuhu min ka'at al akhlaqik." How excellent it can be for you to walk among people, and when you leave, you leave a fragrance that is, the smell cannot be seen anywhere else. Ish al nafsika omran, it said therefore, live a life la yantahi be' amerik. That life does not end because you resign or you are retiring from the, from the, from the school district. Be' akhlaqika, by way of demonstrating a good character, good behavior. There are out to ibsasamika, it said also, by way of showing your, your smiling countenance to everybody who comes to your office. It'sakuna ghayib and hadiran, even when you are absent, your presence must be felt. So we are saying to you what you did here, working with everybody, even though you are going, but your presence will be felt. Your absence here will be like your present, because of what? Of what you have put in place. For those who will come after you, if only they follow suit, everything will be good in the district. Quite frankly, yes. Because you already started a job. You put certain things in place. They don't need to reinvent the wheel. If they can just follow that, everything will be good. We are sad, but we are happy that we were able to achieve a lot more with you and the board, and we hope to continue the relationship with the board and the new superintendent that will come afterwards, and the cabinet as well. So thank you so much. We are very proud of you.
Thank you.
AIS. AIS. I represent AIS, I represent the entire West African Muslim community. They have hundreds and hundreds of kids in the school district. If they have any problem, they come to me, and I come to AIS, they will come to the board.
My name is Arthur Bia, and I'm the co-chair of the organization of Liberance in Minnesota. That's the umbrella organization for the, over 40,000 Liberans in Minnesota. So I stand here for the second time before this board to say that I'm proud of the work that you are doing here. Through AIS, we get feedback, we get updates from the work that they have been doing with the school district and with Dr. McGuire. I want to say that we in a community have seen tangible changes in the school district. And I tell people, I hope, I live in Cone Rapids, and I tell people, I hope that this kind of collaboration, community collaboration that is assuredly doing tangible thing can be in other school district, like my school district and Oka Hennepin, like, you know, Robbinsdale, where we have other kids too. So I want to say that we appreciate you, Dr. McGuire, and we appreciate the board for your collaboration with your community. What I told one council in our, I said it the last time, I commented here again, is that the problem of engaging immigrant community is something that we need to start doing now, because our community will continue to be diverse. So if you do not prepare yourself to deal with that, you will be cut 10 years behind, because we are going forward, there's no way you are going to undo that. We are here, we are born in children, these children are here, they are going to go to school here. So what a school board can do is to prepare, how do we deal with this culture? How do we deal with this population? And you are on the right path to do that. I say, thank you. I appreciate all the good work you are doing. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, good evening. Chair, board chair, and the members of the board. My name is Komba Faya. I'm a board member for the Shuellun community in Minnesota, and I am also a parent. I have two kids in the school district. I just want to re-echo what my previous speaker said about Dr. McGuire. We're happy with the changes that are happening under you, under your, 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 your ring. Even though you're leaving, we know they will continue, things will just continue to improve. Thank you so much, and thanks to the board.
Good evening. Pastor Holder, founder and executive director of Malino Youth Initiative and member AIS. The chairman, board, Dr. McGuire, against state move, whatever I have said, we'll miss you, and your presence has been felt, but I'll say one thing. Somebody told me a long time ago, I'll put in a church form, if the church in your neighborhood disappears and nobody misses your church, that mean your church has done nothing. You will be missed because of the impact you have brought to the community. Good luck, and we'll keep praying for you. Thank you.
Thank you. My turn. Dr. McGuire, we ask that you come down. And yep, yep, you. She knows I always have something up my sleeve. So to begin, one, leadership is not about the title or designation, it's about the impact, influence, and inspiration. Impact involves getting results. Influence is about spreading the passion you have for your work, and you have to inspire teammates and customers, which are our community, and you've done that. Dr. McGuire, you're a true leader and a champion of racial equity. Trying to ensure that students get the same education at all levels within the district is not an easy task. Balancing authentic community engagement, district leadership, a school board, and over 27 schools is not an easy job. You're a dynamic leader that knows how to navigate systems and institutions, work with and listen to the voices of communities, especially the community that I come from, especially, and also especially those most marginalized by the disparities that plague this district. You have stayed true to your racial equity journey throughout your 30-plus years of service in this district. We are proud of how far you've come. Out of everyone we've worked with, within our district, our community has a special love and respect for you. I know this personally because my mom's organization gave you an award in 2015 due to your work with our children in the district. Ultimately, leadership is not about glorious crowning acts, it's about keeping your team focused on a goal and motivating them to do their best to achieve it, which you've done with your cabinet, and we heard that at your retirement party. Especially when the stakes are high and the consequences really do matter. It is about laying the groundwork for others' success and then standing behind and letting them shine. You have created a lot of opportunities and a lot of equity champions that will be, you will be leaving behind as you continue on with your journey. Your legacy that you left behind will live on for the years to come. Furthermore, your impact and the personal experiences that our community has had with you will last forever. We would like to award you with a plaque on behalf of our community. African Immigrant Services would like to honor your inspiring leadership on education equity and your outstanding service to our children and our community. Your impact in Osseo Area Schools will be remembered and celebrated. Thank you.
Sorry, Mike.
That's all right.
I don't really want to...
I'll move, that's fine, that's fine.
Give me a little bit of time, I see you.
Roll some more. Thank you all for coming out tonight. That's hard to follow. Those are some big shoes. I'm looking at the two interims right there. So, and so we are going to follow this with the school board reports. So...
Superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report. You are right. I can't read my own scripts.
All right, Mr. Chair. A regular part of the superintendent's report is to share points of pride. Points of pride celebrates students, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. And I have asked the cabinet members that we have left tonight who aren't sick to do the points of pride, but before I turn it over to Steve, I think is who is first, I just wanted to express my gratitude to AIS and the entire team who came tonight. I want you to know how much I appreciate it. I think I told Abdullah one time, early on, years ago in a meeting, that, you know, I, I felt like that original relationship was almost like an annoying brother. And since, since that time, much in the partnership has, has been achieved. And there are, there are tangible results of your influence on our system, on me, and on this team. There are tangible results of that influence. So I want you to know how much I appreciate that. Thank you. It's been a great journey, a great journey. And I'll turn it over to cabinet members for points of pride.
So under the category achieving dreams, Osseo Senior High has been honored by U.S. News and World Report as one of the nation's best high schools. Osseo earned a silver medal in the 2018 award program, which recognizes high schools based on their performance on state assessments, graduation rates, and how well they prepare students for college. The U.S. News rankings include data on more than 20,000 public high schools in all 50 states and the District of Columbia. Maple Grove Senior High received best high schools award in each of the previous three years. Two teams of students at Fernbrook Elementary took first place in this winter's Fermi Off-the-Wall Math Competition. Fermi challenges students to use their math, communication, and writing skills to come up with solutions to weekly problems. Competing against more than 70 elementary-level teams from across the U.S., Fernbrook's third grade team of the bacon animals and the first grade team of subtracting maniac attackers, each took top honors in their respective divisions. Jake Winneke, a 2013 graduate of Maple Grove Senior High, was a standout football wide receiver at South Dakota State University. Last month, Winneke continued to achieve his dreams when the Minnesota Vikings signed him as an undrafted rookie free agent. Osseo Senior High's Eric Lundstrom was featured as a standout student on CCX News last week. Lundstrom is a senior, three-sport athlete, and talented photographer. One of his photos won a silver medal in this year's National Scholastic Art Competition. After graduation, he plans to join the Army National Guard before enrolling at the University of North Dakota in 2019 to pursue his dream of becoming a pilot.
Each year, Osseo Area Retired Educators gives a $1,500 scholarship to one senior from each of our district's three comprehensive high schools. This year's recipients are Sidney Schulte from Maple Grove, Jackie Schreck from Osseo, and Mandisa Vang from Park Center. The Maple Grove Senior High Junior Achievement Team placed second at Junior Achievement of the Upper Midwest Company of the Year Competition last month. Students on the team developed Pocket Perks, a company that connects customers to discounts and deals at local businesses. Each team member received a $500 post-secondary scholarship from the Otto Bremer Trust. Our next category is contributing to community. North U Middle School students had the opportunity to partner with One-to-One and Metropolitan State University to share input for the design of... of a new law enforcement education course. The middle school youth were joined by high school and college students, community stakeholders, local police officers and One-to-One and Metro State staff. Together, they developed the core competencies they felt were needed for police to effectively serve and protect their community. For the fourth consecutive year, student leaders from Maple Grove Senior High's Link Crew attended the annual prom for patients hosted by Shriners Hospital for Children Twin Cities. Maple Grove students celebrated the evening with patients, many of whom traveled from throughout the Midwest to attend. Sherri Swanson, kindergarten teacher at Elm Creek Elementary, coordinated an opportunity for some of her school's youngest learners to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at the Osseo City Council Meeting on April 23rd. Eleven kindergarteners participated in this opportunity.
In the category of lifelong learning, more than 160 kindergarten through fifth-grade students in Osseo Area Schools participated in the Kid Stop STEM Fair on April 30th at Maple Grove Middle School. From robot cars to lava lamps to a coin sorter, many creative ideas were on display. Community partners from SiMath Men, Curious Minds, Boston Scientific and Geisler Technology served as judges for the event. Palmer Lake Elementary hosted a carnival of engineering for students and families last month. Through partnerships with Boston Scientific and the Works Museum, attendees explored concepts like magnetic bridges, circuits and robotics. Members of the Maple Grove Senior High Robotics Team volunteered at the event, helping families navigate the evening's activities and assisting Palmer Lake students in running their competition robots. Ideas were flying in the minds of 46 graders from Osseo Middle School when local authority Abby Cooper led a full day of workshops and creative writing sessions on May 3rd. During her visit, Cooper inspired students to work hard and also discussed the process of writing and publishing books. This author visit was funded by a District 279 Foundation Grant. Rush Creek Elementary Kindergarten Classes recently hosted a reading cafe for parents. Students shared books they could read independently and showcased their writing skills by sharing books they had written. Superintendent Kate McGuire was a special guest at the event. Pre-kindergarten through fifth-grade students at Zane Wood Community School spent time learning about careers rooted in science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics on May 4th. Zane Wood staff led this day of student exploration and Catherine Klingon, the school's STEAM Coordinator, said some of the most popular career choices were in the video game design and biomedicine sectors.
Finally, under the category of mission-driven employees, several staff members from Palmer Lake Elementary have been selected to present at the National Cast Conference on Universal Design for Learning at Harvard Law School this summer. Stephanie Drayer, the school's Technology Integration Specialist, will host a digital interactive poster session that focuses on using Google Apps to personalize student learning. First-grade teachers Jessica Skolnick, Sandy Jonason and Rachel Miller will present on their use of flexible seating, the learning studio model and technology to personalize learning in the classroom. Lenora Waltz Laidlaw has been named the Osseo ESP Local 7325's Educational Support Professional of the Year. She is a longtime employee with the Osseo Area Schools and currently works at Oakview Elementary and Willow Lane Early Childhood Center as an Early Childhood Special Education ESP. And finally, Sarah Shiner, Spanish teacher at Park Center Senior High, was awarded a $5,000 grant from CenturyLink last wink, last week to purchase virtual reality technology in her classroom. With this technology, her students will have an opportunity to virtually immerse themselves into Spanish-speaking cultures to improve their language.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have last, uh, two additional quick things. One is I want to make sure I mention our District 279 Waachipi, which took place, uh, in late April. District 279 has a strong Indian education program, which culminates in a celebration called the Waachipi. The annual Waachipi, held at the end of April, is a place where student performance is highlighted and cultural knowledge is shared with community in a mutually meaningful way. This year, the event was attended by more than 1,000 community members. Director Craig also attended. Carly Baker, Superintendent of Brooklyn Center and I attended and were able to greet the crowd. Brooklyn Center has students who participate with our students in our American Indian Ed Program and we collaborate on a number of things. One of the highlights is the recognition ceremony for senior students who are honored with the gift of a blanket. The blanket is symbolic of those who are honored from the past and those who are going to build on the future. Lastly, I want to just mention our Investment in Youth Event, which took place on Sunday, May 6th. The District 279 Foundation honored 60 award recipients at the 20th Annual Investment in Youth Event at Park Center Senior High. The program featured uplifting stories of students, volunteers and staff who have made our schools and community better through their significant investment. The program will be replayed on CCX Media, Channel 20 or Channel 859 through Comcast Cable. You can visit the District 279 Foundation website for channels and times. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. McGuire. Uh, now they're coming to the school board reports and April 24th, 2018 special meeting. Uh, Mr. Brigette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The school board held a special meeting on Tuesday, April 24th to select a person to fill a vacancy on the school board. A vacancy on the school board was created by the resignation of Board Member Robert Gerhardt in March. The school board did not have a formal policy or procedure regarding filling a vacancy, so after reviewing statute and researching the practices of other metro area school districts, the school board developed a new policy and an accompanying procedure to its bylaws to address a vacancy on the board. In accordance with the new policy and procedures, the school board posted the vacancy and accepted applications to fill the interim school board position. The top three applicants, as ranked by school board members, had an opportunity to address the board at the special meeting on April 24th. By a majority of vote, the school board selected Mr. Dean Henke to serve out the temporary vacancy. Mr. Henke will take the oath of office on June 5th after statutory waiting period is complete. All school board member work sessions are open to the public and are also audiotaped. Members of the public can access audio recordings of work sessions on our district website.
Thank you. Director Brigette, Director Fortner, I skipped over you, so I apologize. You're up.
I have a few that I'm covering, so. April 23rd and April 30th, 2018 Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee and May 8th, 2018 School Board Work Session summaries. The April 23rd and April 30th, 2018 meetings of the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee were held at the Educational Service Center. The purpose of the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisor Committee is to increase community trust in long-range planning for enrollment and building use. The committee analyzes information affecting enrollment, capacity and building use and generates observations and recommendations to be communicated to district administration. The outcomes for the April meetings were that ECHMAC members would, one, agree to fiscal year 2018 observations and recommendations and two, celebrate our work together. During meetings in April, community members reviewed enrollment and capacity data as well as core area capacity data. ECHMAC members also agreed to use actual rather than target class sizes for capacity calculations when making observations and recommendations. At the April 30th meeting, ECHMAC members agreed to the fiscal year 2018 observations and recommendations to be communicated to district administration. Feedback is solicited at the end of each ECHMAC meeting to continually improve meeting content and format. Information that was reviewed at both of these meetings has been posted to the district website. Following these final ECHMAC meetings, ECHMAC's observations and recommendations were communicated to the superintendent in form of the Fiscal Year 2018 Summary of Progress Report. At the May 8th, 2018 work session, the school board learned about the fiscal year 2018 work of the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee and provided feedback and direction regarding the superintendent's recommendations for next action. During the first portion of the work session, the school board heard from three of the community members who served on the fiscal year 2018 Enrollment and Capacity Advisor Committee. The community members described their experiences with the committee and how it positively influenced their trust of Osseo Area Schools. Next, staff members from the community, along with a representative from World Architects and Engineers, walked the school board through, excuse me, the fiscal year 2018 Summary of Progress. This report includes background information, data analysis, observations and recommendations, and I think Patricia's going to give us a short presentation on what we saw this evening. Next, the superintendent made recommendations for action, which involved directing staff to develop options to address most of the identified items by ECHMAC. The superintendent's first recommendation was to develop options to resolve overcapacity conditions at Basswood, Rice Lake and Garden City Elementary Schools, Brooklyn Middle School and at the Maple Grove, Osseo and Park Center Senior High Schools. The superintendent's second recommendation was to develop, develop options to prepare for anticipated enrollment growth in the attendance areas served by Fernbrook Elementary School. The school board provided direction to staff to proceed with option development as recommended by the superintendent. These options could include eventual actions such as boundary changes, building additions, constructing a new building and closing or repurposing a school, and closing or repurposing a school. Other administrative actions such as modifications to the open enrollment status of schools or the relocation of a program could be included in the options developed. It is possible that staff may uncover additional data or information that revolves, that resolves the capacity concern. It is also possible that a recommendation could be made to accept the reality of a capacity concern and adapt as necessary. Staff expects to have options available for school board review by December of 2018, followed by a process for soliciting community feedback in early 2019. Community members are encouraged to apply to serve on the ECHMAC committee. The application can be found on the district website and is open until June 1st. All school board work sessions are open to the public. This work session was also video recorded. Members of the public can access recordings of the work sessions on our district website.
Thank you very much. Jessica?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The school board held a work session on Tuesday, May 1st. School board members received Summary of Progress Reports on several board-approved strategic priorities. Strategic priorities are approved annually by the school board in accordance with World's Best Workforce Legislation and local school board policies. Specifically, School Board Policy 101, Racial Equity and Educational Achievement, and Policy 616, World's Best Workforce Help to Shape Strategic Priorities. Each school district in Minnesota is required to annually adopt a World's Best Workforce Strategic Plan and Aligned Budget. School board members receive updates on strategic priorities through the year and Summary of Progress Reports are received at the end of the year. School board members receive summary reports on the following priorities. One, integration and alignment of pre-kindergarten outcomes and measures of achievement. Two, implementation of culturally, culturally responsive, research-based, positive behavior intervention practices that include the use of trauma-informed and restorative practices. Three, development of customer service standards. Four, development of a framework to engage families. And five, implementation of effective recruitment and retention practices to build a workforce that reflects the demographics of enrolled students. School board members will receive additional final reports on other strategic priorities at their work session on June 5th and use this information to inform decision-making on identifying priorities for the 2018-2019 school year. The Summary of Progress Reports and all work session materials are available on our website. Lastly, school board members reviewed information related to facility improvements planned for summer 2018 at the Osseo Ice Arena, which is owned by the school district, and the renewal of the Ice Arena Agreement with the Osseo Maple Grove Hockey Association. All school board work sessions are open to the public and are also audiotaped. Members of the public can access audio recordings of work sessions on our district website. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Craig. Director Brigette, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The school board held a special meeting on Tuesday, May 8th. The purpose of the school board's special meeting was to take action on the interim superintendent position. School board members authorized the school board chair to, to enter contract negotiations and to offer employment to two individuals to serve in the interim capacity. Earlier at tonight's meeting, the board took that additional action regarding the interim superintendent position. All school board member work sessions are open to the public and are also audiotaped. Members of the public can access audio recordings of work sessions on our district website.
Thank you very much. Are there any other reports to discuss? All right, hearing none, I would like to introduce Patricia Magnuson to discuss ECHMAC.
Good evening. Chair Oosthafie, Board Member, Superintendent McGuire. Tonight's presentation, as Director Fortner said, will provide a repeat of the information that the board heard at the May 8th work session. At that time, we had several members from the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee here that presented some of our community members, as well as several of our staff members. The outcomes from that presentation on May 8th were that board members would learn about ECHMAC's Fiscal Year 2018 Observations and Recommendations and provide direction on the superintendent's recommendations for staff to develop options, and I'll go through the details of those later. So first, I'm going to just walk through the materials that were presented last week. The actual Enrollment and Capacity and Management Advisory Committee's Summary of Progress Report is also loaded in the board materials, and this presentation will just outline what's in that, in those materials. The first and most important part of, for ECHMAC is this framework. It was created back in 2015 with a group of community members. It took us about a year and a half, and the intent of this framework is to increase transparency and communication with Osseo Area Schools and the communities that we serve. Each color, shape and word on the framework has a specific purpose, and I'm going to walk through those a little bit. First, in the middle is the ongoing work of staff and it's centered on students. The work of the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee, do you see the yellow around the, the dark blue boxes around the right side, depict all of the work that we do to look at data, review data and make observations and recommendations in ECHMAC. Then that work gets passed along to the left-hand side of the framework and that's where we're at today. The work gets passed along to staff and as changes are made and if changes are made, those changes are pushed back into the system and new data is produced every year for ECHMAC. Um, this year marks the second year of ECHMAC's work that's been completed. Last year, at the end of the year, ECHMAC had surfaced some areas of capacity concern, but they also recommended that we dig a little deeper and do some further analysis about building capacity. And so this presentation will walk you through what we did this year. So this is some of, of the journey of our team. In 1718, our members participated in seven large group meetings with over 400 collective hours of work, and we had multiple planning and preparation meetings with well over 200 collective hours. This is a, a photo of an activity we did the first night we were together. Since our purpose is to increase community trust, we spent our first night together talking about our hopes for our work together for the year, and many of the community members expressed hopes such as unity, trust, understanding, inclusion and community building. This year, ECHMAC met in three of our schools. We met at Fernbrook Elementary, Park Center Senior High School and Garden City Elementary. And this photo is from our November meeting at Fernbrook. At each of our meetings where we, we were, we're, we didn't, at each of our meetings where we were in the schools, we were able to tour the school and spend time with the principals and some other staff members at the school. In ECHMAC meetings, each one of them are very data-driven, and at each of our meetings we analyzed the latest annual data about enrollment and capacity. This year especially, we had an enormous amount of data to review because one of the most important tasks we were trying to accomplish this year was to build agreed-upon capacity calculations for each of our elementary and secondary schools. Last week, at the work session, you heard from some of our community members and they shared their reflections about the work. And, and our intent is to continue to increase trust and transparency in, in the data that we review. Now I'm going to walk through the components of the Summary of Progress Report. So this is the order of the Summary of Progress Report. The executive summary is the first section of the report and we... The executive summary is the first section of the report, and we intend for it to be a liftable document, meaning if you've read those pages, you would get a sense for what the entire report includes. The executive summary describes the history of ECMAC and our work to engage WOLD architects and engineers. We foreshadowed that a year ago, that we would be doing that this year. By the way, WOLD is an architectural firm that specializes in facility studies like the one we are undertaking. One of the best practices that WOLD introduced us to this year is a deliberate, methodical approach to making recommendations. The premise of this approach, as it flows from left to right, is that time spent in preparation for the development of options and ultimate recommendation is vital to success, that a good plan builds support at every step of the way. So the first step is that data is gathered, and then once data is gathered, it must be interpreted to understand its meaning. We spent most of our time in ECMAC this year doing those two things. The single most important thing is to stop. You see the itty-bitty stop sign there? To make sure that we all understand the needs that we are beginning to observe, and we regular, regularly refer to that stop sign during our ECMAC meetings to be certain that we were building a shared understanding of need. Following the executive summary, we did begin with the observations and recommendations, but I'm first going to go through the enrollment and capacity data before we walk through the observations and recommendations because they do build to that. So section two of the report then is enrollment, and we describe how enrollment projections are developed and how we got to our current enrollment projections. Basically, we use the same calculation every year, a cohort survival method, to build our enrollment projections, and we can calculate on those mathematical models to create reasonable enrollment projections when our patterns stay in place. But oftentimes, breaks in patterns occur, and they have to be accounted for. So breaks in pattern can be caused by things like new housing developments, opening of a charter school, or a private school, or program or attendance area changes that might cause students to move into the district or move out of the district. And one of the pattern breaks that we're paying attention to is potential new housing development. Staff have been in ongoing discussions with the city of Maple Grove, monitoring the timing of some growth that we expect in northwest Maple Grove, and we're beginning, in recent conversations, to quantify how many homes might come from that area in northwest Maple Grove, and some of the timing. We'll build some of that growth into enrollment projections when it becomes more clear. At this time, that growth has not been built into our five-year projection. District 279, I'm going to do the little arrow again, owns some land in northwest Maple Grove in that area of anticipated growth, and we, as staff, have already begun to think about options and costs if we might need to build a school in the future. The plot of land is large enough to build an elementary school. It is not large enough to hold a middle school or a senior high school. When we have unanticipated breaks in pattern, they, they show up as variances in projections. And so if you look at page 18 in the summary of progress report, we laid out the specific variances from projection at each school and at each grade level. For fiscal year 2018, the variance from projection was about 1% overall. So as you can see, the model that we use does fairly accurately, when patterns are in place, project enrollment. The five-year enrollment projection is on page 17 of the summary of progress report. Currently, we are anticipating a growth in enrollment of about 4.18% over the next five years. And again, that's before accounting for what might be some growth perhaps toward the end or beyond that five-year period of time. Then after we've looked at enrollment, we, we reviewed capacity and the work that WOLD had done, and all of that is outlined in section three of the report. So the first step in calculating capacity is to calculate the number of classrooms that we would have at each school. After that, we try to figure out the number of students that would be assigned in each classroom, multiply those two variables, and that becomes the capacity for each school. I'll take you through some of the details. To determine the number of classrooms at each school, this is just an example of one of the floor plans and how WOLD methodically went through with staff at each of the schools and with some of our central office staff. They visited each elementary school and each secondary school. They wanted to gain a deep understanding of how our buildings are used to serve, to serve the students in that school, that particular student population. And after those visits, we held several meetings with staff from the Division of Leadership, Teaching, and Learning, and then we held follow-up meetings with the principals to clarify how the buildings were actually being used and to make sure we were thinking consistently about programs across all sites. This is just another example of a floor plan. The WOLD study then determined the classrooms at each school that could potentially be identified as available student-capacity classrooms. So that was the first part of building capacity. Page 20 of the summary of progress report goes through the elementary assumptions that were next applied. So once we knew the available elementary classrooms, we wanted to consider some assumptions that might be applied. They are things like the number of cafeterias and gymnasiums and other academic support areas that needed to be present in the schools beyond just capacity-grade-level classrooms. We reviewed those with the board early in the fall in October, and the board agreed to using those assumptions as we moved forward with calculating the capacity of our elementary buildings. For secondary buildings, we also built some assumptions. We wanted to, again, take the available classrooms and then make some assumptions about the number of classrooms available for student capacity. What we did in this case was apply a utilization factor, and what that does is it adjusts the number of available classrooms for inefficiencies that we can predict in secondary classroom utilization, and these result from the way students choose to take classes and the way we are able to schedule classes. For instance, if a building has a six-period day, a class, any individual classroom might only be used for five periods and sit vacant for one period. So these percentages of utilization help adjust for that. So then we go back to trying to assign the number of students to each classroom, which sounds simple, but it is not as simple as it sounds. We have now applied all of our assumptions to the classrooms, and we have the classroom numbers, and we wanted to determine the number of students assigned to each classroom. We use target class sizes in the district to determine the number of teachers and the number of classrooms that we might need in a school in any given year. However, those target class sizes don't tell the whole story of what actually happens in a school in any given year. So those, so our actual class sizes will vary for many different reasons, and here's some of them. Some of our schools receive additional funding based on the particular and specific needs of the students in that building, and the leaders at those sites might use that funding to reduce class size. So using targets in that case wouldn't tell the whole story of, of how a building is used. Another way is that site leaders might decide to move staff from one grade level to another. So we want to make sure we're adjusting for how a principal might use their staffing. And the, the other and most important is that grade-level cohorts don't come in packages of 25. So we want to, to adjust to be sure that we're not overfilling or underfilling a school just by using targets. And after a lot of discussion over a couple of meetings, the ECMAC members agreed to use average actual class sizes rather than the targets, and that was because we thought that they accounted for the specific programs and student needs in a better way. So then, we had all our variables put together. We knew the number of classrooms. We had decided on using the average actual class size to assign students to our classrooms, and that built the student-capacity number for each of our buildings. So page 22 in the summary of progress report shows our current thinking about student capacity that resulted from that study this year. Another lens that we wanted to run through, besides the number of classrooms, was the capacity of core support areas in our schools. Those are areas outside of the classroom that serve all students, like media centers and cafeterias. If core support areas are undersized, a building might have sufficient classrooms, but it might not have sufficient capacity to meet the needs of students. So we measured each building's actual media center and cafeteria square footage in comparison to guidelines from the Minnesota Department of Education, and WOLD architects and engineers helped us through that study. So those results are on page 23 of the summary of progress report, and were also used in our observations and recommendations. So then if we go back to the top, using all of that data, we first just observed what we saw, and here were our observations. That by fiscal year 2023, we have three elementary schools, Basswood, Rice Lake, and Garden City, that are expected to have enrollment that exceeds student capacity by more than 20%. Zane Wood, one of our elementary schools, is expected to have enrollment that falls short of student capacity by more than 20%. And we also knew that anticipated development in northwest Maple Grove could substantially increase enrollment at Fernbrook and its surrounding schools. Depending on funding and local development decisions, this enrollment growth could begin as early as the fall of 2020. And we also, in addition, knew that the cafeteria at Basswood is substantially undersized. As for secondary schools, these are what we observed. All of our middle schools are expected to have enrollment that will reach or exceed student capacity by 2023. Brooklyn Middle School, however, would exceed its student capacity by more than 10%. All three of our comprehensive senior high schools are expected to have enrollment that exceeds student capacity, either classroom capacity or core area capacity, by 2023. All three, Park Center, Maple Grove, and Osseo Senior High School. Maple Grove and Park Center will have student capacity. We expect to exceed, student enrollment that will exceed capacity by more than 20%. And also, the cafeterias at Maple Grove and Osseo Senior High are undersized. So those were the observations, and we turned those observations into these recommendations. We wanted staff to develop options, then in, in addition to the options, we wanted them to develop timelines and a phase-in plan because we felt that some of these needs are more urgent than others. To address these following needs, we wanted to address the overcapacity situation at Basswood, Garden City, Rice Lake Elementary Schools, at Brooklyn Middle, at Maple Grove, Osseo, and Park Center Senior High Schools. And we anticipate, we wanted to have staff develop options to address the anticipated 2023 under-capacity condition at Zane Wood Community School. And we also wanted options to address the anticipated enrollment growth due to future housing development in the attendance area served by Fernbrook Elementary School. In our initial ECMAC framework, we had five potential option areas that were available to staff, and I want to walk through these because the implications of each of those are very important, and I want to say them out loud as we begin this option development process. The first option would be attendance area adjustments, and as you know, that's just a geographic area that helps us to balance enrollment around each of our schools. And I want to note, an implication is that attendance area adjustments to resolve capacity concerns at one school could have an impact on other schools. We, we don't always just address through an attendance area adjustment at one school alone. Second, we might build a new school, and we want to note that options to build a school will result in the need for a voter-approved bond issue to build the school, and then we would also need to identify general operating funds to operate the school once it's built. In addition, a new school will require the creation of attendance areas, and that will probably require the adjustment of attendance areas for several schools. I'm going to go back here. The third option is we could construct an addition or an expansion to schools. So this could look like an addition of square footage, or it might look like reworking the, the internal parts of a building to create a more efficient floor plan that would provide more student capacity. And again, I want to note that an option to expand or add to a school could result in the need for a voter-approved bond issue, depending on the size of the project, and it may also lead to attendance area adjustments. So one may lead to another. The fourth option we looked at was the option of closing or repurposing a school. And again, closing a school would also mean we'd have to reassign all of those students. So they would need to be reassigned to another school and could have an impact on multiple schools' attendance areas. And finally, we could do nothing. We might uncover some additional information through our work over the next several months, or we might decide we need to accept the reality of the concern and make adjustments to live with it. So just to be clear, those are the kinds of, of options we'll be reviewing over the next several months. The last part of the report talks about the advisory committee, and I do want to talk about that a little bit. We do have our application online right now. The deadline is June 1st, and I really encourage more community members to, to apply. It's a great set of community meetings. We meet seven nights during the school year, and I, I would like to add more than 10 community members. I think the more we have at the table all along the way, the better we'll be in the end. Most of our community members are returning next year, but we have room to expand. So June 1st is the deadline, and there's the set of meetings established for next So the next steps for ECMAC were that we wanted to, we were passing along our recommendations and observations to the superintendent, and all of those are in the summary of progress report. And now, the stop sign gets to go away, and staff can move on. Once we've agreed to those are the things we want to review, now we can begin to develop options. And this is a photo of the group of community members that was in attendance at the last meeting. So I am very appreciative of the time that they dedicated, several meetings and evenings this year, and time in between working through data. Now I'm going to walk through the recommendations that the superintendent made as a result of what we presented to her at the May 8th work session. She directed staff to develop options. So I anticipate there might be several options to attach, to attack these, these issues that were surfaced. So to develop some options to address the, most of the items identified by ECMAC. The first recommendation was that staff develop options to resolve overcapacity conditions at Basswood, Rice Lake, and Garden City Elementary Schools, at Brooklyn Middle School, and at Maple Grove, Osseo, and Park Center Senior High Schools. And the second superintendent's recommendation was to develop options to prepare for anticipated enrollment growth in the attendance area served by Fernbrook Elementary School. And we had a discussion after that, and as was reported earlier at the May 8th work session, the school board provided direction to staff to proceed with option development as recommended by the superintendent. We expect to have options available for school board review by this December, December 2018, followed by a process for soliciting community feedback in early 2019.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Thank you, Patricia, for that overview. I'm sure it provides good reference to our new interim superintendents and all the work we'll be doing, but I know that you're feeling under the weather, so great job tonight, and thank you so much for your time and to the team and all the effort that has gone into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you. It's very nice to have thorough explanations of everything to keep everybody, community, all informed. So thank you.
And I, I just want to say, I was a liaison to the committee over the last year and a half, and they do a lot of work, and I appreciate all their time and effort, and I've, I walked a lot of those steps along with them, and they had taken it very seriously, so I appreciate their input. So I appreciate their input. And as Patricia said, and as Dr. McGuire emphatically noted at the last meetings, that now we had, we're given a direction, we're going to start spending resources and staff time over the next many, many months to come up with options. And then there's going to be a lot of feedback, and then there's going to be recommendations. So that's, a process is going to take quite some time, and we are going to be very open about it, very transparent about it. I think we've had three, you know, two ECMAC meetings and several board work sessions in the last couple of months, and they've all been open. And like I said, there's going to be, the, the work has started, and we're going in the direction that we had given last week, I guess it was, and thank you for, for all that hard work. And for, just to mention, you know, there are many openings on the ECMAC committee, and it's for anybody who lives in the district, not just parents, but any community member across the district. We are looking for your support to come in and be a part of this and to help shell, shape how we go forward and, and how we present the options and receive the feedback and make the recommendations. So I look forward to many people. I, I hope we have to turn some away, that, that we get so many in. So please, go to the website, as Patricia noted, and look to apply to ECMAC. Again, we're, it's open to everybody across the district. So thank you very much.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Does anyone have, want to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Is there any, wait, not, not to, to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Director Craig. Any discussion?
I would like to note a couple of things. Over the last several, you know, meetings, we've, work sessions, we've done quite a bit regarding the ICE arena and safety and digital learning for all. And there are, those three items are in this consent agenda. We've had many meetings on it. We've taken a lot of feedback during the work sessions. So a lot of that has come to fruition in here, and I strongly urge people watching to go to the board materials and take a look at some of the things that are going on. And there'll be more information about some of these things going forward. But like I said, safety at the schools, digital learning for all, and issues around the ICE arena and the partnership are all going forward. So, end of discussion. We'll take a vote to accept the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four-nothing, and the consent agenda is accepted. Number, item number 11 is gifts to the district totaling $116,855.67. And I will make a motion to approve the gifts to the district totaling $116,855.67 with gratitude to those who donated. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Fortner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four-nothing. And again, thank you for all who donated their time and treasure to the district. Was anyone reading the informational items, or was that me? That's me. So, got a couple announcements. A school board policy committee meeting will be held next Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the forum room at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. A school board work session will be held Tuesday, June the 5th, 2018, at 7:15 PM in the forum room at the ESC. Topics will include the oath of office for new board member, the fiscal year 19 budget, the world's best workforce priority goal updates, the world's best workforce priority goal recommendations for 20, and for 2018, 2019. This meeting will be open to the public. A school board policy committee meeting will be held Monday, June 18th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the forum room at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. A school board regular meeting will be held Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom at the ESC. And a school board negotiation strategy meeting will be held Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in Room N-10 at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public. I, that comes to the end of our agenda at this point. Does anyone have any topics they wish to discuss? Seeing none, I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:17 PM. Is there a second? Second by Director Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.